One, today is June 24th, 2020. It is 7:00 PM and we are opening a regular Board of Education meeting of the Cogah Heights Schools. Mr. Muccio, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Edder.
Present.
Mrs. Schuker.
Here.
Mr. Suchaki.
Here.
Mr. Naiman.
Here.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here. Five present, none absent. On behalf of the Board, I'd like to welcome our students, staff, parents, and interested community members to today's Board of Education meeting. The Ohio Legislature passed House Bill 197 in response to the COVID-19 public health crisis. That bill grants permissive authority to define state and local public bodies to hold public meetings by way of teleconference or video conference until December 1st, 2020, or during the period of the COVID-19 emergency, whichever occurs first. In order to hold such meetings, the public body must meet the qualifications established in the bill related to providing adequate public notice, methods of public participation, and distribution of information and materials. The Board believes that it has satisfied all of HB 197's criteria to hold today's meeting by teleconference or video conference. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available to review on our school district's website. Would you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the Father, to the United States, and to one nation.
May I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda? So moved? Mr. Naiman moves. Second. Mr. Suchaki, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Just one that, there was a late resignation that got added today. Kerry Dougherty, our library assistant, got a full-time teaching position, so that's been added to the resignations.
Okay, thank you. Do we, that's already reflected in this evening's agenda, correct?
It's on, yeah, it's added, but it wasn't, you know, we released it Friday, and so that's been added since then.
Very good. Okay. If there's no further discussion, then can we have a vote on the this evening's agenda?
Mr. Naiman.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Comments from the public? The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues, and is now asking the public to email comments that it might have otherwise provided during the public comments portion of this meeting to the following email address: info@cuihps.org. The Board will strive to respond to all comments received as promptly as possible. Moving on to Treasurers' business, Mr. Muccio.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins. Couple motions tonight for recommendation. First one, 4A, motion to approve the minutes of the June 10th, 2020, regular meeting, and June 16th, 2020, special meeting as found in attachment T1. 5A, motion to accept bank reconciliation, financial reports, and payments for board review as of, that should be May 31st, correct that, 2020, prepared and certified by the Treasurer Zachary as found in attachment T2. 5B, motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W9's attach as found in attachment T3. 5C, motion to approve purchase orders over 5,000 as found in attachment T4. 5D, motion to approve modifications to the permanent appropriations fiscal year 2020 as found in attachment T5. 5E, motion to approve the following fund-to-fund transfers, operational transfers out represents monies move from and to another fund permanently. 100,000 from the OO1 general fund to 300/950s athletic fund, 75,000 from OO1 general fund to OO60000 food service fund, and 4,000 from OO7-9012 Doug Corlett Scholarship to OO8-9042 Doug Corlett Scholarship. And 5F, it's going to be a motion to approve the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2021 as prepared by the Treasurer as found in attachment T6. Nice for motions 4A, 5A, 5F.
May I, and you'd like that all as a consistent agenda, I presume, Mr. Muccio?
Yes.
Yeah, so may I have a motion for approval of the Treasurer's consent agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Schuker moves?
I'll second.
Mr. Naiman, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just have a couple things. 5A for the financial reports. I'll really go over those in detail once we close up the fiscal year for the month of June. So the next board meeting that we have our financial reports, spend a good length of time going through those. I kind of like to do that at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and the end of the fiscal year, which would be the next meeting that we have. For 5B, the approval of new vendors, nothing out of the ordinary. The prom venue is going to be for the following year. So there's a hope that we're going to have prom by that. Everything else is, nothing out of the ordinary that we would have. 5C, approval of purchase orders. Beginning our purchase orders for the new fiscal year, fiscal '21. So we see Gordon Food Services for the Cafeteria Lunch Products. That's through House Schools Council. Two is calcium construction, installation of Bolo Sticks. We have our document archival system and requisition system for number three. Number four is going to be the trash pickup blanket purchase order for the entire fiscal year, fiscal '21 coming up. The others, normal ones are Microsoft Licensing, fiscal '21, cafeteria paper products, which is going to be a blanket purchase order for fiscal year 2021. Number seven's rideouts for SpeedFlex football helmets for fiscal '21. And the last one, number eight, is going to be for the Pace Schools lunch heat processing system for fiscal '21. 5D is going to be a modification to our permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2020. We have two changes, two funds in which we're increasing. It's going to be Fund OO7 and Fund 451. The reason for the $4,000 increase for Fund OO7 is we're going to work on transferring out an amount to close out a duplicate account that we had on our books. So we had an OO, we had a Doug Corlett Scholarship Fund within Fund OO7 as well as Fund OO8. What we're going to do is close out the OO8 account by transferring money from OO7 there. And we're just going to use OO7 going forward. I'm not quite sure why there were duplicate accounts on our books. It's been that way for a couple of years, so right now I'm getting, going through the weeds right now, kind of, you know, fixing the small stuff that we have. Number two is an increase of 5,400. That's for Fund 451, and that's for our K-12 network connectivity subsidy that we get for fiscal '20. 5E is going to be approval of transfers. We have three transfers for tonight. We have the $4,000 that I was talking about, and we have 100,000 going from the general fund to our athletic fund, Fund 300. That's what we had in our five-year forecast, as well as our financial reports all along the way. In my notes that I have down here, it's kind of small, but as of May 31st, our total revenue was 30,000 and our total expenses was 100,000 approximately. So that deficit of 70,000 is what we would have to transfer in essentially. I'm sticking with the 100,000, which we had in our plan the entire year. We want to give that fund, not the exact deficit amount, but enough cushion to kind of have some leeway with it. So that's why recommending the 100,000 for the transfer. The second one is going to be the 75,000 that we have from the general fund to the food service fund. Again, same way, if we look at our revenue, 210,000 as of May 31st. Our total expenses, 270,000. That's $60,000 deficit as of May 31st is where we're at. Again, we still have one more month from month of June, but with that, I'm still going with the recommendation that we had all along, 75,000. Again, it's to fulfill that deficit as well as give the fund balance a little bit of a cushion going forward. 5F is going to be our temporary appropriations for fiscal year 2021. We're opening this up right now. These are just temporary for the time being. We're going to come up with our permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2021 sometime between August and September's board meeting. But in order to spend $1 within fiscal 2021, we have to have a temporary appropriation resolution on our books. And I just wanted to point out for our general fund, which is our most significant fund that we have, OO1, the $17,307.009 does align up with our five-year forecast, which was board-approved back in May, and we can see highlighted here, that we have the $17,307.009, which follows our planned fiscal '21.
Good.
Close out of here. That's all I have for today.
Very good. If there's no, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to know about the thermometers. Is that something that we're anticipating the purchase of those thermometers for use in the fall because every child's going to have to be?
We've already started using them. We've already started using them. When the athletes check in, they do a scan. So we know, we know we're going to need more. I'm meeting with the maintenance on Monday and the principals to go through and, because what's going to happen here, everybody's going to start ordering at the same time. So what might be in stock right now is going to disappear very quickly. So Mr. Zerbola has some open POs right now for, on this fiscal year that we want to get some things in and have them stockpiled before there's a shortage of them to get, so we know that we can start the school year with, with the types of cleaning supplies, disposable masks, those types of things that we know we're going to need to have on hand.
Well, how many thermometers does $1,000 buy these days?
Um, I don't know the exact price. I think these were just over 100 apiece. And these are the non-touch thermometers. These are the scanned thermometers. So, yeah, we don't know, because we don't have any recommendations yet from the Ohio Department of Health of, we know we have to do it for athletics right now. We know we'll do it at graduation on the 19th. We don't have any idea of what's going to, what they're going to tell us we have to do when school starts.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was just curious, that's all, and thankful that we're looking ahead, too.
Yep. And just to piggyback on top of what Tom was saying, for tonight's approval, we're approving the W9 as a new vendor for the thermometers. We can see right here, estimated amount for what we're purchasing is about $1,000 at this point. And, you know, the amount's about $100 per thermometer, so we're looking at 10 at this point in time.
And that, a lot of this is being purchased through our membership in the Ohio Schools Council. The Ohio Schools Council has worked very hard on some group purchasing and really got the price down on a lot of these items right now. The cleaners, the masks, thermometers, a lot of those things. So that's been a real benefit to us. They've been working their tail off over at the ESC, trying to get good prices for us so we can have in stock what we need.
That's good to know because I'm sure there'd be quite an easy opportunity for some vendors and manufacturers to up the price for some of the products.
The gouging is ridicu, if I showed you the disparity in prices from some of the independent vendors that are just, you know, cold calling me and sending stuff to me, it's ridiculous. Yeah, it's crazy. Borderline illegal, I think, in some instances.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Well, very good. Thank you very much for, for doing that and looking ahead for our needs in the fall. So that's really good.
Mr. Muccio, I have a quick question, too. So for the, for the, for the prom venue, I would imagine that's for the class of 2021, right? So that's, that's our class. Is, I just was curious, is there, is there a clause in the contract that allows us out if the COVID virus goes?
Well, this is, right, this is just approving the W9. We haven't placed the contract on for board approval at this time. So this is nothing more than just saying we're looking to add this vendor to our accounting system for future use for this family.
Got it. Okay.
Yep.
If there's no further discussion, can we move to a vote then, please?
Mrs. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Naiman.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Treasurers' discussion and comments?
Yep, I just wanted to touch base on House Bill 164. This was the recent bill that was just signed by the governor on Friday the 19th, 6/19/2020, so last Friday. For us, what it does, just to summarize, is I'm opening up this estimated reduction offset payment. So what this House bill does is it caps the amount of Governor DeWine's deductions and the deductions that we had taken from us amounted to 42% of our state aid. So what this House bill does is it factors in the CARES Act money, and it caps a school district's cuts at 6%. So our amount that we're going to receive back from this House bill is on this page here for Cogah Heights Schools, and it's $138,121 coming back to us. Now, enlarge this for everyone to see right down here. Again, this is the, this is the estimated amount. That's what we have at this point in time.
What was it? 138,121? Okay.
Yes. Yep.
So, Mr. Muccio, what's, what's the, kind of the net effect of all of the changes in state funding that occurred in the last month or so? What's kind of the net effect to our school in fiscal year '20?
Right, yeah. We, and I have a calculator on my screen right here. Our cuts, and I'm just going to round, were approximately 231,000. The money that we're getting back from the House Bill 164, it's 138,000. So the net effect is 93, but also we have to factor in that CARES Act money that we receive, which is approximately 60,000. So our loss overall is approximately 33,000.
Oh, and oh, it's a, it's a fairly modest net effect on our budget. Thank goodness.
Yeah.
Yeah, better than the original.
Mr. Naiman lost connection. And so he's trying to reconnect. He just texted me.
Okay. And that's all I have tonight.
Actually, that, that was an add-on to 164. 164 is a lot of the restart-up information and gives us some flexibility with teachers as far as the COVID crisis. And so Senator Dolan, again, this was his, his, his baby, and he really kind of came through for us on this one. So again, I, we, I've sent an email to thank him, and I thanked his aide recently. So you saw in the paper that a lot of schools in Cogah County were affected by this dramatically. So this was good looking out for him. We appreciate it.
Yeah, and we appreciate your efforts, Mr. Evans, and staying in touch with Senator Dolan and, and making sure that these sorts of things can happen. So that's great.
Agree, Gary.
Yeah, agree. Thank you.
Nice work. Moving on to superintendent's business, Mr. Evans.
Okay, superintendent's business, staff resignations. A, motion to accept the retirement of Judy Harvan as an elementary school teacher effective the close of the day on July 31st, 2020, and to thank her for 17 years of service to the Cogah Heights Schools. B, a motion to accept the resignation of Kalen Acrely as his teacher assistant effective at the end of 2000, that should be Doug, as well, same date 1920 school year. C, motion to accept the resignation of Colleen Murray as cafeteria worker effective June 19th, 2020. D, motion to accept the resignation of Kerry Dougherty-Barnier as a middle school, high school library assistant effective the end of her 2019-20 contract. Nine, superintendent's business employment of certified staff. A, motion to approve the employment of Kalen Acrely as the elementary school teacher per the adopted salary schedule, MA Step 5, on a one-year limited contract for 2020-21 school year contingent upon satisfactory completion of BCI, FBI record check, and proper certification. Ten, superintendent's business employment of classified staff. A, motion to approve the change in classification schedule for Fortunato Spadero to move from tradesman 2 to tradesman 1, Step 13, pending completion of licensing for pool and spa operations. He's actually on tradesman 2, Step 13 right now. Superintendent's business employment supplemental, motion to approve the employment of Dave Wallace as the Dazzle Progress Book Coordinator, 50% on a one-year limited supplemental contract for 2021 at a stipend of $2,500. And B, motion to approve compensation of $250 to the following teachers for revision of the health phys ed curriculum at the middle school level for 2021, Trish Brodsky, Joel Kovach, and Sharon Sights. Superintendent's business agreements, contracts, and membership. A, motion to approve the maintenance agreement with HDC Automation for building automation and management system services for 2020-21 at a cost of $9,000. B, motion to approve an agreement with Educational Service Center Northeast Ohio for tuition for Pep Prentice at a cost of $181, $148 for two students for the 2021 school year. C, motion to approve agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Learner School for Autism for providing educational services for a student who resides in the Cogah Heights School District effective August 17th, 2020, to July 30th, 2021 at a cost of $79,223. D, motion to approve agreement with Jim Swissler for strategic plan consultant services for 2021 school year at a cost of $15,000. And E, motion to approve the attached agreements with Naviance for 2021 to provide web-based program used for career and college services at a cost of $2,730, and to provide consulting training for the new high school guidance councilers needed at a cost of up to $1,250. I ask that those items be approved.
Very good. May I have a motion for approval of the superintendent's consent agenda?
So moved.
Sounded like Mrs. Schuker moved, and Mr. Suchaki, second, maybe?
That's fine.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion and a second? Mr. Evans, any discussion?
Just, you know, Judy, we, I kind of informed the Board that Judy was retiring. So thanks for her service and, you know, Judy was one I could always go to when I needed a straight scoop. She wouldn't sugarcoat it at all. I appreciate Judy's and, and what she did for us as a, as a teacher. Kalen Acrely is resigning her teacher's assistant position to take the, to take Mrs. Harvan's position. Colleen Murray, the cafeteria worker, has resigned, and Kerry Dougherty has taken a teaching position in a community school in Parma, I believe. Nine is the employment of Kalen Acrely. She's been with us as an aide, did an outstanding job subbing for Mrs. Boswell as the talented and gifted teacher. Fantastic job. We didn't miss a beat there. Sunny Spadero moving from tradesman 2 to tradesman 1. I did throw in there that in order to do so, he's going to need to get his license for pool and spa operations. We're down to one licensed person right now. We really should have two so we can rotate people on that, taking care of the pool area. Supplemental contract for half of the Dazzle Progress Book that Dave Wallace handles kind of the tech end of it, and one of the counselors usually handles the other end of that, and while that is yet to be determined. In the course of study writing, we need to update the course of study for our health phys ed, and Trish, Joel, and Sharon are going to work on that together. The agreements, contracts, and memberships, HDC, the automation one for $9,000. Unfortunately, they, our program for our HVAC system is handwritten by HDAC, so we, we really couldn't go anyplace else if we wanted to, which just exacerbates the need for us to install a new HVAC system. But it's really outdated, but, you know, that's what we have to do to get by with it. Students at Pep Prentice, we have two students and I know at least one full-time aide with the, those students at Pep Prentice. That's the same as it was this last year. Cleveland Clinic Learner School for Autism, that's one student, that's the same student that's been there the last several years. Jim Swissler, I apologize, I don't have the, his numbers for the last few years. I know that Jim has never gotten remotely close to the total amount that we've contracted him with for. And this year, I've kind of added in the facilitation of the work group, and, and he assisted in the hiring of assistant superintendent process, too, and just always does a great job for us. And then Naviance, and as I said during the agenda review, Naviance is kind of one of my pet peeves. I think that's, that's a system that has a lot of potential for us. That was one of my factors in the selection of the guidance counselor, that she has some pretty in-depth experience with Naviance. And I just think that that's a, there's some potential there that we can be using in the middle school and high school that we have not used, and I look forward to, to that expanded use. The price is the same. We just haven't been, we've used it for college letter, recommendation letters, but there's a whole career portion to it that, you know, several years ago, and I think Lindy remembers this, there was a big push for every student to have a career passport, a little, a physical document, and that kind of fizzled because of the, just the bulkiness of doing it. Naviance really does the same thing for us. We can, each student can develop their own career passport and their own career exploration through Naviance, and we can go down even into middle school and start to use that with students. So I'm excited about the potential that that presents for us moving forward. And that's what I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there, if there's no further discussion, let's move to a vote, please.
Mrs. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Naiman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Mr. Evans, superintendent's report and comments?
Several things. We had the initial meeting of the Back to School Work Group last night. I think we had 20 out of 29 members, or 21 out of 29 members, they were able to log on, so good turnout. I sent out a Google form for the signup for the subgroup selections. I'll be working with the admin team early next week. We're going to really kind of clearly define what we're looking for from those groups so they can begin to start to meet with that, to plan for the reopening, and also a distance learning component. We have to have distant, we have to have a distance learning plan or remote learning plan approved by the Board and sent to ODE. Now, ODE doesn't approve it, but they're going to put it on their website by the end of July. Somebody said they pushed that back to November. I don't know if that's accurate or not. I think that might be the, the other plan that they were asking for. We still don't have any quote-unquote recommendations from the governor. They, they keep telling us any day now. What we do know is the governor, we've heard is that he's not going to give us guidelines, that everything that he's going to give us is in the form of a recommendation, and that essentially, from his point of view, this is going to be a local control issue. And we're hearing that term a lot, and I explained it last night to the work group what that meant. I'll talk a little bit more about that. We're also waiting for guidelines from ODE, and maybe most importantly, the State Health Department through the County Health Department. Now, a lot of health departments in some of the surrounding counties are really working with school superintendents very closely on, on, on putting plans together, our, because of the size of our county and maybe a little bit of the bureaucracy. We're not hearing anything from them right now. We anticipate they're going to kind of follow in line with what the State Health Department recommends. That's been what they've done all along. They haven't deviated from that at all, so we're anxious to see what that looks like when that comes forward. That would, that's one of the reasons why we didn't start the work group until last night, is that there's still so many things that are undefined. I know a lot of, a lot of schools started it a month ago and are now redoing things based on the information that they have. And I didn't want to get into where we put together a plan then had to redo it because of what came out from the state, from the governor, from those things. So I think we're in a place where we can get it done in a timely fashion, and good group, good involvement last night. I'm, I'm anxious to get that group going. Second item is a mascot discussion tomorrow. Mr. Dobbins, Mrs. Schuker and I are meeting with Mrs. Graham to discuss the removal slash replacement of the redskin as the district mascot and how we might move forward with that process. So that's kind of the first step. I will tell you today that I already started conversations with the president of the Alumni Association, with several coaches. I've already reached out to several of our vendors to say absolutely do not use the redskin head on any of our, any of our cloth purchased for the school district. I'll be meeting with Mr. Kelber to go through some of that. So, you know, we're going to go to the block CH, and then where we go from here, we can work on determining, but tomorrow is a kind of a very first step. I've reached out to two Native American organizations and shot them emails and just said, listen, we're, we're a community that has deep roots with Native American Indians, the, the name of the county and the name of the community that we're located in. Is there a way that we can respectfully honor our heritage moving forward? So I'm, I'm waiting for responses from those groups. Today was testimony on House Bill 320, which has some more educational things. I'm not sure why, because the, the House has already left for summer break, so the Senate's in, and they're going to be leaving pretty soon. I don't know that, but there's going to be a lot of legs to that, and that is essentially a local control. That actually is the legislators saying that there will be no legislative control over the reopening of schools. So I don't know that that's going to get through or not, because half of them are, you know, half of the group's gone already, but I didn't, I didn't follow the testimony today, so I'll check in on that tomorrow. The House Bill 164, obviously the big part of that was the finance part of that, but it also gives us some flexibility coming back in the fall with the COVID-19 crisis. It gives me some teacher flexibility, that I can use a teacher in an, in an area where they're not certified within two grades of where they're working right now to allow for some additional coverages if we have to go to a blended learning schedule. So that gives us some flexibility at schedule with our teachers. There's several other items in there that will help us if, depending on what we need to do with the COVID-19 crisis. And contact sports have been restored to full participation minus scrimmages, competitions with other schools. So we can, you know, basketball can be back doing one-on-one drills, and volleyball can do whatever they need to do, football, the seven-on-seven drills and what have you. They just, we just can't do them with other schools at this point. So we move forward. The one thing that has not been clear, I met with a cheerleader advisor and the, in the band this week to talk about what they can and can't do. And essentially, the band can do anything but not use their instruments right now in a group because spit's involved, the instruments and saliva, and, and they're telling us that they're going to give us a recommendation on, on what the band will be able to do and not do with instruments. So as much as we've got a lot of clarification on some of those things, they kind of left the band hanging. So we, I had a discussion, Mr. Sokol, I was not too concerned about it. Normally, it doesn't get started till about August 1st with band camp, so we're confident we'll have something in place by that time. Just one other add-on. I'll be out tomorrow morning. I've just got a route. Just one other add-on. I'll be out tomorrow morning. I've just got a routine doctor's appointment. I'll be back in. I don't know if I had it on my schedule or not, so I'll get back in the building about ten or so tomorrow. So if you're looking for me or or trying to get ahold of me, I'll be I'll be out at a doctor's appointment, so. Anything else?
Hey, Tom, two things about the mascot. One, can there be a direct conversation, I believe it's with Alice, about sending out that bobblehead that is awful?
Yes.
For the Athletic, when you join the Athletic Association, I think it's like the highest, whatever the highest money value is, they send out the bobblehead for. That's one. The second thing was having a, you know, conversation with Erica Bachi, cheerleading advisor, about the cheers, because again, a lot of the chants, they have a lot of really not good stuff in it.
Yeah, I didn't want to do that with Erica when I had the the music people on the same Zoom meeting. I'm going to have that conversation with her individually, and I will have the conversation with Alice individually as well. That that's a one-on-one conversation for me. That that'll be, that's one of the ones that it's a little, that's why I talked to the Alumni Association President, first of all, and I'll talk to the boosters individually about about that, that we're just simply, and I already told Ryan Kelber that he needs to contact BSN and make sure that whatever cloth that we have for sale on the website, that there that the logo's not on it, and that we take the redskin name off of things and just use the Cogga Heights or Heights or Block CH on it moving forward. So that that, you know, we're 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 in agreement as a as a board and a superintendent that we need to move forward this. When I talked to several coaches about it, and they were panicked, they thought it was going to happen between now and the start of school. I said, no, this it's going to be a process, and we know some people are going to be very emotional about this, so we're going to give them them the opportunity to come and and kind of speak their piece before us as we move through this process. And and actually, as I talked with Mr. Young today and a couple of the other administrators, he brought up the idea that, you know, the first thing is, you know, removing that that mascot. But then the second part of that is moving forward with a new mascot, and and Mr. Young suggested that maybe if we're not ready to name a new mascot, that we go for a year without necessarily have a mascot. We can just be Cogga Heights and and take our time and and get it done correctly in the way that we want it, then we want to make sure that it's reflective of who we are as a district, and and if we can, if we can honor that heritage, we certainly want to do that as well.
See the students involved in that process, too.
Absolutely. But I and I also want the Alumni Association involved in it, knowing that that, you know, that I I want them to know that we hear what they're saying, but we also need to move forward with this. It's this is, this is, it needs to be done now. We need to, we need to move forward with this. And again, I'm no, you know, I'm the one that used it as a tagline for for ten years. So I feel strongly about it as anybody, and I and I will be the first one to tell people it's it's time for us to move forward with this. It's it's just not, we got to got to move forward.
And you know, you know, in education, usually it's the parents and and the alumni that are going to be the hardest hit when it comes to change.
Absolutely.
But usually, the students are the ones who are so versatile and, you know, ready for action and change. And so I I think that, you know, our our student population is a very strong, active, you know, very active group, and I think that they they can kind of help us lead the charge.
You're a hundred percent correct, and that's come up in student surveys before. We haven't necessarily asked the question about the mascot, but we've asked them about other things in the district they would like to see changed or things, and and it has, it has come up on multiple occasions from students kind of independently. So yeah, I I I agree with you a hundred percent on that, Mrs. Schukert. That's all I have.
So, Mr. Evans, I got a couple of questions. Relative to these, this legislative change or lack of it relative to the COVID crisis, do you expect that the the board will be asked to adopt or or ratify any of the the changes that are likely going to occur, given that this is being pushed down to the local level?
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to have to, you're going to have to approve, at the July meeting, you will have to approve what our plan is, our plan. That's, and then we will forward that to Columbus. They're not, all they're going to do is post it on their website, but but you know, that that will, we will need local board approval on that to to be able to move it forward, so.
Okay, that's that's helpful, because what I was getting to is just what you touched upon, which is whether we need yet another meeting at some point between now and the start of the school year to to ratify this, these change in in teaching methods and instruction.
No, it's it's just, I think the July meeting will work fine for that, and that's because that's the timeline. Quite honestly, I told the the admin, some of the admins today, that I would anticipate it might take two meetings of each work group to kind of fill in what that looks like, what we're looking for, and then put the whole plan together. So I I think really in the next couple of weeks, we can, we can do a lot to to pull that plan together. And each admin will have a kind of a role in the different groups as as far as, you know, you know, Mr. Young's going to obviously deal with the the our education delivery portion of that. Mr. Burick is going to work on the social emotional end of that. That part of it, I I'll kind of be peeking in on everything, but I'll be with operations, the operations part of it, and the and the physical things in the building that we need to do to make sure that, you know, like right now, the water fountains are shut down. We got to have bottle filling stations and some things in place, because we all know what it's like when you come back to our building in late August. If we've had, if we've had an extremely mild summer, I can guarantee you that temperatures will be in excess of ninety-five degrees the first day of school. So that's, that's, that's pretty much a lock. So but we want to make sure that we're ready and we can accommodate what, especially what the plan puts together. Whatever recommendations come out of the group as well, because there's a lot of things that we can define ourselves right now. You know, as far as what our mask requirements are going to be, what we want, what our expectations are. A lot of conversation that went on in a couple of conferences today that I had statewide, and really statewide is very different than what our county is thinking. Statewide is being a far more progressive about getting back to the school than maybe some people in our county are. And I will tell you that I I talked with Bill Wagner at Fairview. Ted and I talked, was Telly the new superintendent at Brooklyn, and I reached out to Ben Hegadish, and we played phone tag today. But the four of us being smaller schools in the county have a little bit more flexibility, and our plans are going to, are all look relatively similar, so we're going to collaborate the four of us together so that that we kind of bounce some things off each other about what's going to work in our districts our size in in getting kids back in the building. I will tell you, some of the bigger districts are not planning on that right now. I was surprised Berea Mid Park's going to start a week later. They're not, they're not talking about coming back with everybody together. I I thought everybody had pretty much scrapped the split schedule, but from the sound of some of the other schools in the county today, some have not. But small schools, you know, our our plans to have have our kids back, everybody that wants to be back, the parents that want to back, back in the building in August.
That's a very, a very commendable idea for for you similarly situated superintendents to work together. Very good idea, great idea. And thank you for the work you're doing and that your team's going to be doing. A lot of work, a lot of ground to cover between now and July.
Yeah.
Mr. Evans, can you give us an update on the July nineteenth graduation?
Yeah, of course. I tell you, I talked with a couple of mayors, and it was it was kind of funny, but we're we're planning on moving forward July nineteenth. Haven't heard anything from the Health Department. But again, nothing was supposed to change until July first. What what that plan looks like is in a kind of a synopsis is at nine thirty in the morning, we're going to have the the parents drop off the seniors in the front of the building, and we're going to have they're going to have, the sidewalk's going to be marked for each student on six-foot sections. So we're going to do that temperature check right there, and we're going to line the students up in their caps and gowns, and then the parents are going to proceed to park down on the grass area next to the football field. And then the parents will get temperature checks in the questionnaire before they go to their seats on the football field. While they're, while we're doing that with the parents, we're going to take the the seniors on their, on that senior walk that Mr. Young started with them. We're going to invite all the teachers back, so we're going to walk them through both buildings. We're going to bring them back down behind the elementary building and down the track and down the fifty-yard line, and then they'll be seated in the bleachers while the parents are seated on the field, and we'll be obviously addressing the parents. We'll do our regular graduation ceremony minus the band and orchestra and choir, because they they simply haven't been able to practice, it wouldn't be ready anyhow. And then at the end of the, at the end of the ceremony, we're going to dismiss by rows to their cars. So there's not going to be time for people to gather and 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 kind of mingle at that time, and because we're going to line everybody up, and we're going to do the the safety forces and all three villages are going to lead us through the three villages on a on a parade that we hopefully can do in about an hour. I'm still going to sit down with the police chiefs and work out what that route's going to be. I know when we did the one in Brooklyn Heights, that took forty-five minutes, but we went down every street in Brooklyn Heights. So we're going to try and do a little bit of an abbreviated parade through each of the villages and and find out what works best for those police chiefs, because I know like some of those places get a little bit tight on cul-de-sacs as far as turning around is concerned. But work out, and then and then print that route, what the route's going to be, so people can be by the roadside to to kind of give a wave and cheer to our students, so. That's what we got right now.
That's good. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. If there's no further discussion, it's superintendent's report. We can move on. Board committee reports and comments. Does I can, does anyone have anything to offer?
I just wanted to say thanks to Judy Harvan for her years of service at our school. I know she was very vested in our school and for our students and for all that she worked, all the people she worked with, and I wish her good, good luck in retirement.
Yeah, I I share your your thoughts and and appreciate Miss Harvan's years of service. I also note that I believe this is the last board meeting during which Ms. Riley will be employed by the district, and she's worked with the district for forty-plus years, so I congratulate her and wish her well.
We're going to take her out to lunch tomorrow, her and Ted, and then Tuesday is Sandy's last day, and I got to believe it's it's going to be a little bit emotional for her. So she's really kind of been very quiet this last week or so, and I I think there's a lot going through her head right now.
Absolutely. Well, wish her well as as well. Lot of years of service.
Mr. Sajaki, do you have anything? Okay, Gary, do you have anything for the group this evening?
Yes, a few things from the Bureau Center. Our meeting is tomorrow night. On that agenda, we've got students that are being recognized, two of the Cogga Heights students. Darcy Bundis and Ryan Rose are getting one thousand dollar scholarships. Joe Jackbeck is going to be not recognized again as Vice President of the Future Health Professionals. The first ever CBCC board member of that organization. The other things that are on the agenda tomorrow night are handbook approvals, memberships, and insurance, pretty routine stuff for the rest of the meeting. It will be a remote meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Namen, do you have anything this evening?
No, just I'd like to echo the comments to wish all the best to Miss Harvan and and also Sandy to Riley as well. So thanks for serving the district for these years. Really appreciate it, and that's all.
Okay, Ms. Schukert?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I did participate yesterday in the restart group. And, you know, I just, I really commend you, Tom, on how you're handling it. I I like the later start with it. I think that that's smart. Give the teacher, you know, I think it gave the staff members some time to kind of reflect a bit on the year and maybe what worked and what didn't, and I'm excited just to be working with these colleagues. I think, you know, we've got a strong administrative team, a strong staff, strong parents on it, and I'm excited, I'm excited. I feel good as a parent that we're going to be okay in the fall. And Mr. Young, you know, I'm telling you, your interview helped me. It it gave me lots of confidence that we've got this, so I I do just want to thank you, too, that that we're we're in good shape, we're going to be okay. Our kids are going to get the best education. So and and thank you to all the people, even the people that are resigning, you know, good luck to them as they move on to different chapters of their lives and and welcome, you know, to the new hire that she's, she'll be on board as a as a teacher. So that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. We can move on to future agenda items. Are there any agenda items that the board, the board members would like to suggest at this point? Hearing none, we can move on to informational items. Agenda information. It should be noted that the Board of Education members receive their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they have had considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. Seventeen B, upcoming regular meetings. Upcoming regular meetings will be held Wednesdays at seven PM on August twelfth, August twenty-sixth, September ninth, and September twenty-third. And I would note that we are, at some point, we will post for the July special, special meeting. If there's no further business tonight, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Sajaki moves. I'll second. All those in favor? I'll take that as five ayes. Motion passes. It's seven forty-five PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.